Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Cepeda. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Rolstol. The county administrator is Bonnie Weiss. The county attorney is Christine Bapp. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the August seventh, two thousand and twenty-four regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you today. We thank you for your great love that you have for each and every one of us. We thank you for our Hillsborough County employees and we pray a very special blessing this morning for our recent retirees in code enforcement, Daryl Welch, facilities management, Raymond Lopez, in fire rescue, Stephen Dowd, Cynthia Wallace, James Holder, and in head start, Frances Ferguson, in library services, Susan George, Candy Kenshin Grande, Jacqueline Zebos, in public utilities, Ricky Brown, John Reagan, Daniel Orlosky, and Sunshine Line, Penny Burton. We ask you to fulfill, fill their hearts' desires, to meet every need above and beyond what they could think or ask, and we pray for a long and healthy life for each and every one of them. And this morning, we also have a very special remembrance and prayer for our Hillsborough County family that we remember Cynthia Perry. Cynthia Perry was the senior administrative specialist for Kim Byer and Josh Bellotti. Cynthia contributed over eighteen years of dedicated services, working in both real estate department and public works department. And we pray for her husband, her family during this difficult time. We also want to remember Brian Moses, who was a traffic sign marking technician. He was promoted to traffic instrumentation and control technician little more than a year on his job. His manager, Daryl Norton, gave strong, said he had a strong commitment to his position and was very successful in all that he did. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife and son and their family members, and they will be missed by everyone. And we also pray additionally that there was a horrific fire that took the lives of four family members in Plant City on July thirty-first. Our Hillsborough County Fire Rescue was on the scene in eight minutes after nine eleven. A nine-one-one call came in and the team working hard was able to pull out three adults after five minutes. After the fire was extinguished, a fourth person was found. And we pray for this family, Judy Foster, Jessica Broman, Chase Bowman, and Joseph Kleats and their loved ones. We pray for a special peace that passes all understanding to Garrison and Mount Guard over their hearts and minds during this difficult time. And we pray for this meeting and we ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Okay, this morning, we have one special proclamation to be presented, and that'll be from Commissioner Myers.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Chair. With Brian Butler, President and CEO of Vistra Communications, and Eileen Rodriguez from the Minority Enterprise Development Corporation of Tampa Bay, please join me at the podium. Good morning and welcome. Today, it's my pleasure to celebrate the hard work, dedication, and successes of black-owned businesses and the founders who have fought hard to achieve economic and cultural prosperity. Black-owned businesses help form the foundation of our community, contributing greatly to Hillsborough County's economic diversity and dynamic industry. Numerous of organizations have done much to support black-owned businesses and their significant impacts to the county. In recognition of this, I am honored to present the proclamation to Ms. Rodriguez, declaring August as Black Business Month. The proclamation reads, whereas the black-owned businesses are a key contributor to the economy of the United States, the state of Florida, and Hillsborough County, and whereas recognizing August as Black Business Month acknowledges the importance of black-owned businesses and all they represent and is an opportunity to show support for businesses that have been historically underrepresented in the marketplace, and whereas this occasion shows support for and celebrates the contributions of black-owned businesses and entrepreneurs that provide a significant number of goods and services to the economy and jobs for residents, and whereas the county's Minority Women-Owned Business Enterprise Program and the following organizations strongly support black-owned businesses and the economic impact, the Black Business Investment Funds, Florida Minority Supplier Development Council, Hillsborough County Black Chamber of Commerce, Minority Enterprise Development Corporation of Tampa Bay, Tampa Bay Black Business Investment Corporation, NAACP Tampa Chapters Empowerment Center, PFC Black Chamber Tampa Bay, Small Business Development Center at Hillsborough County, the Tampa Bay Black Chamber of Commerce, Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce Minority Business Accelerator, and the Urban League of Hillsborough County. And whereas approximately ten percent of all the U.S. businesses and thirty percent of all minority-owned business, U.S. businesses, are black-owned and serve industries including construction, defense and security, engineering, financial services, healthcare, hospitality, informational technology, and professional services. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare August twenty twenty-four as Black Business Month in Hillsborough County and urges all residents to recognize the value of black-owned businesses and the important role in the county, state, and nation, and national economy awarded the seventh day of August twenty twenty-four. Congratulations, Ms. Rodriguez. And would you like to share some thoughts before we do that? We need to come on this side. Come on right, join the picture. You're looking, Hampson, you can join us. Thank you, dear. Okay. So Brian, would you like to share a few words with us this morning?
Yes, ma'am. If I get this to cooperate. Well, first of all, thank you, ma'am, for always thinking about the businesses and what's important here in Hillsborough County. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Brian Butler. I'm President and CEO of Vistra Communications, a black-owned business, and I call Hillsborough County home. We're a diverse group. Black-owned businesses in Hillsborough County are in a wide range of industries. The defense industry, engineers and architects, plumbers, HVAC, electricians, construction management and security and access control, lawyers, CPAs, and consultants, trucking, warehousing, and logistics, caterers, restaurants, bars and food trucks, printers, and automotive repair companies, writers, publishers, booksellers, retail and manufacturing. We even have a true value hardware store right here in Hillsborough County. And of course, public relations and marketing. Our businesses are large and small, from sole proprietors to businesses that hire hundreds of our residents. Black-owned businesses are contributing to the local economy of Hillsborough County. We are part of the fabric of this community. We are involved, engaged, and we give back to the community. We volunteer and we sponsor events and activities. We serve on nonprofit boards and support our schools. We are actively engaged in our chambers of commerce and focus on economic development for our country, for our county, and for our region. We appreciate this proclamation recognizing Black Business Month, but just remember, we are open for business year-round. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And to all of our minority-owned businesses, thank you for being a part of Hillsborough County and what you do in always reaching out to make sure that the community knows to come patronize you. I was looking for Candy Lowe. She's for ever taking her bus tour to all of the small businesses. So if you don't know, reach out to Candy, she'll make sure that you're on the list the next time we have a bus tour. I also would like to recognize our two staff, Ken Jones and Karen Moes Minor, for what they, yeah, just clap, because they're making sure that our minorities are aware of what the county has to offer. So thanks, everyone. So I'm going to ask if everyone coming to join us in the picture.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Bonnie, you want me to change the agenda?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one off-the-agenda item. This is item B six. This is to discuss and direct the county attorney's office on whether to take further legal action in the case of Hillsborough County School Board versus Hillsborough County, including filing an expedited notice of appeal. We have one item that has been deferred to a date to be determined. This is item B three, which is the modification of the St. Joseph Hospital and Florida Health Sciences Center doing business Tampa General Hospital for the provision of hospital healthcare services to the Hillsborough County Health Plan. We have several items for time certain. The first one is item D one at ten a.m. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed Plan Year Twenty-four Annual Action Plan and substantial amendments to Plan Year Sixteen through Plan Year Twenty-three Annual Action Plans to close the public comment period, adopt the annual action plan, and submit the documents to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. We have several items also, beginning with D two, which is to conduct a public hearing to accept the recommendations of the hearing officer and emergency medical planning council to approve modifying the current certificate of public convenience and necessity. And D two is to be issued to St. Joseph's Hospital to operate one ambulance for the primary purpose of transferring patients being admitted to, discharged from, or transferred between facilities, excuse me, operated under Bay Care Health System. D three has all those same approvals. This one is issued to St. Joseph's Hospital doing business St. Joseph's Children's Hospital to allow St. Joseph's Children's to operate three ambulances for the primary purpose of transferring neolatal and pediatric patients being admitted to, discharged from, and transferred from between facilities operated under Bay Care Health Systems. D four has the same approvals. This one's issued to Glenn Care Inc. doing business HCA Florida Brandon Hospital to allow Brandon Hospital to operate five ambulances for the primary purpose of transferring patients being admitted to, discharged from, or transferred between facilities operated under HCA Healthcare. And item D five is also the same approvals to issue to Medtrans Corporation. Medtrans is to operate a second-air ambulance helicopter to provide medical air support services to thirteen Advent Health Hospital facilities in West Florida. D six at ten a.m. also is to open the public hearing and tape public comment regarding the adoption of solid waste rate resolution and continue such public hearing to ten a.m. on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. The continuance is necessary to allow time to evaluate funding options and alternatives that could possibly reduce the recommended annual assessment amount. Item B five at ten fifteen is to approve the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office contract with Red Speed Florida to administer the Hillsborough County School Zone Speed Enforcement Program. Item E one at ten thirty is related to item B one. This is scheduled appearance by Tom Morrison, Bond Counsel, Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority, to discuss the BOC consideration of industrial development authority financing for Bay Care Health Systems. And then item B one at ten thirty, also related to E one, is to approve of not to exceed one billion nine hundred million Hillsborough County Industrial Development Authority Health System Revenue Bonds in various series and sub-series for Bay Care Health System for the primary purpose to finance future expenditures relating to construction and renovation of various projects. In addition, refunding bonds to provide debt service savings. Eleven forty-five is recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Commissioner Rolstol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to draw our attention briefly to the item that's being deleted, B three. I appreciate the county administrator identifying it and moving it to this selection, and I will just make clear that I believe that this was an intentional effort by a member of staff to undermine my office, and I look forward to hearing your full report about what's being done to make sure it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
My camera motion, approve the changes.
Move approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote. Changes to the agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, the board will go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from the citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinion is valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, at the same time, as requested when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally at commissioners or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside forty-five minutes for public comment this morning. The chair will call on speakers by name. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. First three speakers are Brooke Ward, followed by George Aguilar, and then Ellen Lyons. I don't see Ms. Ward. So is George Aguilar here? Good morning.
That's me, that's me. Hello, thank you, good morning. Yes, so my name is Jorge Aguilar, and I am speaking today on behalf of the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition. I'm here to speak to this commission and its consideration of the PACE program. I think it's agenda item F two. And really just to express my disappointment in Chairman Hagan and the commission in their continued inaction on enacting a truly comprehensive plan to provide county residents with programs to help with affordable energy, climate resiliency, and generally, clean energy solutions. Today's discussion of PACE, a program that has historically been riddled with problems and predatory practices, I think is just misguided at this point. It's another example, I think, of the county making one-off decisions without fully taking time to plan out how best to serve its residents in a truly systematic and intentional way. Related to that point, I think another shameful example of the lack of commitment by Chair Hagan and the commission to a true sustainability plan to protect the pocketbooks of its residents, the neighborhoods and environment of our, of your constituents, is this so-called vulnerability assessment adaptation plan and local mitigation strategy of twenty twenty-four. The county is doing the bare, bare minimum to check the boxes for a draft to prepare for those eventualities of adapting. And it's clear that Chairman Hagan and this commission care zero about enacting a truly comprehensive plan. It has not come up in any of your meetings. The public does not even know that this is going on. So our coalition has repeatedly asked you to intervene in TICO's rate case as a first step in helping out county residents. You still have time, and asked that you really enact a comprehensive affordable energy and climate resiliency plan with clear goals and timelines. And yet, Chair Hagan and this commission have flat-out refused. Given that this commission has three months left before the new term begins, it's sad to reflect on the legacy of neglect and dereliction of duty by the leadership of this county commission when it comes to sustainability and energy costs. County residents really expected more from you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Next three speakers, Ellen Lyons, followed by Amy Marie Granger Welch, and Patricia Alonso. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ellen Lyons. I'm with Hillsborough County Council, PTA. PTA is the oldest, largest child advocacy organization in the United States. We've been around for a hundred and twenty-five years. We brought about hot lunches, child labor laws, and we advocate for conditions of children in classrooms and for family engagement in schools, which all of the research shows that when families are engaged in schools, students have better outcomes. And so we're here today to let you know that we support the referendum for millage. We encourage you to place the referendum for millage on the November twenty twenty-four general election ballot. This decision to vote on the referendum for millage, it belongs to the voters of Hillsborough County, the people who you represent. It doesn't belong to you. So please stop any gamesmanship and comply without any further legal wrangling. I hope that you get great legal advice. And put the referendum for millage on the ballot so that Hillsborough County voters can decide this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Amy Marie Granger Welch, followed by Patricia Alonso, and then William Haynes. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Amy Marie Granger Welch. I'm the Vice President of Advocacy for the Hillsborough County Council, PTA. I speak on behalf of the thousands of parents, teachers, and students who rely on a strong, well-funded public education system. The PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Today, we ask you to fulfill your administrative duty to allow the people of Hillsborough County to vote on the education funding referendum this November. The law is unequivocal. Your responsibility in this matter is purely administrative with no discretion to alter the school board's directive. A recent court ruling has reinforced that your role is to ensure this referendum is placed on the ballot, enabling our community to have their say. Fulfilling this duty aligns with the PTA's commitment to safeguarding the educational interests of our children. Delaying or obstructing this process would not only violate the court's order, but also diminish the voice of our community. We urge you to act without hesitation and place this vital issue on the November ballot, allowing voters to support our public schools and the future of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Patricia Alonso, followed by William Haynes, and then Rachel Hobbs. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Patricia Alonso. I'm a former teacher and a proud product of public education. This board took a partisan vote to keep the school funding referendum off the ballot this November. That decision was an overreach. You tried to take for yourself the power of another elected body, the school board. You forced the hand of the school board and the superintendent airs to take this matter to court. This is our taxpayer money on both sides being spent to correct your overreach. And of course, the court found that the only logical textual interpretation of the law is that the district school board has the authority to set the date for the vote on its resolution. That's all. The court has ordered this board to place the referendum on the ballot on November fifth of twenty twenty-four. Beyond the issues, beyond the legal issues you also overreached in trying to take the issue away from the voters. We want it on the ballot. Our students deserve better. Our teachers, custodians, and drivers deserve better. They deserve a thriving public school system, not one that is fractured because of public servants who don't believe in public education. I urge you to follow the court's ruling and put the millage referendum on the ballot, giving Hillsborough County residents the right to choose whether they want to fund education in this county. Put it on the ballot on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. William Haynes, followed by Rachel Hobbs, and then a Joe C. Ficki. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Will Haynes. I'm here as a parent, a local PTA board member, representative of the Hillsborough County Special Education PTA, and a voter in District Two. But more importantly, I'm here as someone deeply invested in the future of Hillsborough County's students, teachers, and the integrity of our democratic process. You know, when I was young, I believed that regardless of what side of the aisle we were on, that we all had the same goal. We might differ in how we get there, but that the elected officials and our local politicians and servants, that they wanted a better society, better lives for the people that voted for them and trusted them. And I believe that. And today, I wonder, did something change or have I always been naive? And that's not the case. I could share stories with all of you about the hard-working teachers, staff, administrators, bus drivers, lunchroom workers, that have impacted my son and have helped us through school. I could tell you about the openings of ESE teachers and pares and aides that are missing in our county and how this referendum could help fill those spots and get quality teachers in positions and keep them there. I could tell you stories about being refused charter schools and private schools because when you say the word autism, they say, no, thank you. So for many families, public education is the only option. I could urge you and say, please, vote for this millage referendum. But the reality is, is today, like, that's not the point. And I don't know that would matter to some of the people on the board today. We say we don't want to burden the taxpayers with additional taxes. It's a tough time. Economics are rough. But we have no problem throwing the CIT on there, even though it's not due for another two years. We have no problem maybe wasting taxpayer dollars fighting legal battles when the law is clear. Even after reducing how much money goes to the school board from the CIT with the promise of, well, the millage will make up for it. We don't want to double-dip, and then we're trying to take that away too. It's clear, some of us in the room have made it obvious, we do not care for the millage referendum. We don't want to vote for it. And that's, that's fine. That is all of your rights. You can say, I don't support this, I don't want it to happen. And I encourage you, just like those of us who support it, educate the public on your side of it. Tell us why you think this is a better choice or not. But it's clear that you have a duty to put this on the ballot. If money is tight, like we say it is, and it is for most of us, let the voters decide. I want the ability to prioritize where my money goes, and if that is to teachers or to a CIT, then I should have that choice. I urge you to respect the democratic process. Allow the people of Hillsborough County to decide on the referendum. Trust the voters to make the right choice for their children, the schools, and the community. Every student, including those with special needs who are often overlooked in budgets, need the quality education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Rachel Hobbs. Rachel here? Okay, then a Joe C. Ficki, then a Peter Horseman, and Carl Peterson. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you all for allowing us to be here today with public comments. I want to thank you all for voting against the referendum, and I would ask you all to please stand strong against this. And the reason I do this is because as a constitutionalist, I'm against taxation of the people. Our school board sits with a budget weighing in at four-point-one billion dollars. All these people advocating for this tax should be at their school board asking for a forensic audit of all those made-up jobs for friends and families sitting on the school board that are making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. They also need to ask why the school board decided to buy land that is considered swamp land that was valued at one-point-four million dollars less than a year ago, and our school board paid thirty-six million dollars for swamp land that is owned by China. And you can look at Matt the Wilder's most recent video for that. I also would like to talk about another issue regarding the school board. The school board needs a forensic audit. They do not need more money. You have a lot of waste. You have a lot of friendship circles making bids for jobs. The school board superintendent makes almost- The school board superintendent makes almost as much as the President of the United States, and he has the gall to sue the people for not wanting to give them a taxation that they now feel is an entitlement? No, thank you. So I thank you all for turning that down. I suggest the citizens get into that budget and find out where $4.1 billion goes. Speaking of friend circles, I would also like to speak on the electric park, energy park that we're going to be talking about here soon. That property is owned by a Dennis Carpenter. I don't know if any of you know who Mr. Carpenter is, but he is involved in your commissions already, and he helped through a campaign kickoff for somebody who was appointed. And with that, I say thank you, and I hope with your appointee, you respect the people's choice, because the people have spoken, and we do not want this taxation, nor do we want another Anthony Pettisini puppet sitting on our board. And I say thank you to you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you state your name for the record?
Josie Ficki. Vote for Matt the Welder. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next three speakers, Peter Horseman, followed by Carl Peterson, and then Julie McGill. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Peter Horseman. I'm a resident in District 2. I'm here today to talk about Item B6 on the agenda regarding the school board tax referendum. Whether or not it is within your power to postpone this referendum until the next election is a moot point, in my opinion. What is at question is whether you're going to be stubborn and play a childish game of which of you has the authority over the other, or allow the more than 800,000 voters of Hillsborough County to make this decision in the democratic way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Got Carl Peterson, Julie McGill, and Anna Corman.
Members of the board, thank you for letting us to speak today. I'm also speaking about the millage referendum, but I really love that we began by speaking about economic development in terms of Black Business Month. There is no conflict between economic development and paying for public education. The most powerful force for raising up the economic development and future tax base of a community is by providing strong public education that prepares students to succeed in an increasingly technological world that requires increasingly strong foundations from an early age. And so the idea that we would drive a wedge between economic development or financial security of our residents and public education is completely unbelievable. The only way to develop a community is to provide strong public education that will allow us to compete with our surrounding counties. As we know, there are severe shortages of experienced teachers in Hillsborough County due to a pay differential. We're not paying our teachers appropriately, and this was one of the issues that was debated by this council, by this commission. Now, an average resident, and think about the public trust that's placing you here. The average resident hears maybe a little bit about the school board, a little bit about the county commission, this beautiful building. My first time being in this building, I'm just kind of amazed. It's such a beautiful building. Think about all the public trust that is placed in the members of this commission, paying your salaries, paying the staff salaries. And I have the utmost respect for the professionalism of the county commission staff and employees, and I don't want to impugn that in any way in this chamber. So I just want to put that on record. I have the utmost respect for professionalism of the county staff. And think about all the public trust that's being placed in all of you. You're meeting here at 9:01 a.m. on a workday. The average resident of Hillsborough County, who has all the concerns about their financial security, being able to pay their bills, they're at work at 9:00 a.m., most of them, on a Wednesday morning. All right? So they're placing a lot of trust in you, that you're going to make the right decision, and that there will be some predictability. As representatives of the public, whether they voted for you or not, they are expecting you to provide services in a predictable way. So the debate that was held months ago about how much percentage should be devoted to schools in the county commission's own millage referendum, that was a debate that was had months ago. The average person might have thought, oh, okay, so they're going to give some money to the schools, and that'll be, that'll be that. And then they'll also put it on the November 5th ballot, refer referendum for the school board separately. That was a settled matter. So the predictability of this board is called in question, and the public trust is called in question. When you say that you're going to do something, go ahead and do it. Live up to your commitments, because if you're not providing that public trust, then the public is going to have to exercise their right to vote a new commission in. Okay? Because it's not respecting public trust when you behave in an unpredictable way. Thank you very much.
Sir, can you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Carl Peterson.
All right, thank you. Got Julie McGill, Anna Corman, and then Jason Marlowe, who's virtual. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Appreciate this opportunity. My name is Julie McGill. I'm actually running for school board District 1, and I want to thank you for voting against the referendum. I have a huge problem with the school board budget. We do need a forensic audit. The school board, I'm going to add to what Ms. Ficki stated. They spent $20 million for a parcel in Plant City. I'm a real estate broker, so I look at these values. That value was, that property was worth no more than $1.5 million. So my question is, where's the other 18-plus million dollars going? We can't see it because it's not transparent. That particular purchase died in the property appraiser's office website. You cannot trace it. There's something wrong there. They also spent the $16 million for another parcel that's basically swamp land. So what are we doing here? Why isn't anything transparent? When they stop wasting our money, and this is in the millions of dollars, this is a lot of money. When they stop wasting our money, get a forensic audit. Let us see where all this money is actually going behind the scenes. Then maybe we can talk about what the school board needs to spend the money on as far as teachers and better pay. We don't need to be taxed anymore for this one. We don't even know where millions of dollars are going. That's what I have to say about this. I would really appreciate it if that would be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anna Corman, is Anna here? And then Jason Marlowe and Laura Tucker are both virtual. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Anna Corman, and I'm the President and CEO of the Hillsborough Education Foundation. I'm here to speak to the off-agenda Item B6 regarding Judge Peacock's ruling directing the Board of County Commissioners to place the millage referendum on the ballot in November 2024. We believe that education is key to a prosperous community, and public education is an investment in our collective future, not an expense. The needs facing our school district are critical, and our students simply cannot wait until 2026. I urge you all to follow the judge's order, fulfill your administrative duty, and move this matter forward to the ballot. Let the voters decide this matter for themselves, which is their right. And I would further encourage this board to seek to collaborate with our school district. Our community benefits when we all work together for the greater good, and I can think of no higher purpose than to improve the lives and well-being of our children. Let's put our differences aside and focus on doing what's right for the students in this community, and again, let the voters, who have the right to decide this for themselves, whether or not to move the referendum forward in November, in 2024, not 2026. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Corman. Jason Marlowe, virtual. Mr. Marlowe on the line.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Jason Marlowe. Let us be frank. This board cannot claim the mantle of fiscal responsibility if it is willing to engage in a legal food fight with our taxpayer dollars. Every dollar wasted on this millage rate debate is a dollar that has been righteously invested here in our community. For well over a year, listeners have listened to these meetings while commissioners have particularly waterboarded us with clamors for funds for improved local infrastructure, funds that this board is being asked to waste frivolously on attorney's fees. The reality is simple. If folks are for or against this millage increase, they can vote yes or no. This is the core tenet of our democracy, one person, one vote. It is inappropriate for this board to usurp authority that does not belong to it by considering its votes more important than ours. This board should not suppose that it knows better than we, the public, do. We are more than capable of making decisions for ourselves, and frankly, it would be insulting for this board to suggest otherwise. Board ranks 50th in the nation in teacher pay, and Hillsborough County Public Schools, despite being the seventh-largest school district in the nation, is losing quality administrators, educators, and support staff every single day, taking advantage of paying its employees thousands of dollars a year less than our neighboring county. Let's not rob our children and our families of our community of a possibility for a better future. I thank you for the time to speak this morning, and politely ask that we preserve local tax dollars for things that matter, not throw them away to tilt at windmills. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful day.
Thanks, Mr. Marlowe. Our next three speakers are virtual. Laura Tucker, followed by Carmen Edmonds, and then Barbara Teppke. Is Ms. Tucker on the line?
I'm in person.
Oh, says virtual. Good morning.
Laura Tucker has not checked in.
That's because she's here. All right. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Laura Tucker. I'm a retired school social worker, and I volunteer with many organizations, including the Hillsborough County Democratic Public Education Caucus. I live in Odessa, Florida, and I live in District 2. This morning, I woke up at 5 o'clock, a little earlier than my alarm was set, feeling a bit nervous about coming back down here again to speak to all of you. I've been at the podium several times, and sometimes I feel like you hear me, but you don't hear me. And I was thinking about what I was going to say, and I wrote this out yesterday, but I was thinking, my goodness, a beginning teacher, a beginning teacher's salary is less than half of the salary of most of you sitting here today. But I don't want to say that because that would be snarky. So I'm going to stick to my words, and I wanted to come here and witness and thank all of you for adopting Resolution 24 SB 1 and making sure that the measure appears on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot, as ordered by Judge Peacock on August 2nd. Unfortunately, it looks like you may plan to delay. Forcing delays through the court is stock and trade of those in power. A delay is really all you need. Our rights to choose, to vote, to learn, to speak are being eroded daily by those in power and those with special interests who lurk in the shadows. We know there are powerful special interests in Florida who are afraid that the renewal of the community investment tax expiring in 2026 might fail if two tax initiatives are on the ballot. Failure is a bridge too far. The gravy train of tax dollars has had a full head of steam. The rich and powerful will say and do whatever it takes to keep tax dollars flowing into their pockets for the next 17 years. We will take note of those who stand on the right of greed and those who stand on the side of right. Believe me when I say, we will make our voices heard at the ballot box, one way or another.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Appreciate your comments. Next three speakers, Carmen Edmonds, followed by Barbara Teppke, and then Deborah Setzer. Is Ms. Edmonds on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning.
My name is Carmen Edmonds, and I'm speaking, um, good morning, on Item B6. And I normally don't like to announce that I'm the chair of the Hillsborough County Republican Party, and it's not because I'm not proud of that, I'm very proud of that. Normally, I like to speak on things as a private citizen, but I represent 225 members of the Republican Party here in Hillsborough County, all across our county. And we are asking as a collective body that you would ask to appeal the judge's decision on the school board tax and find outside counsel to appeal it. Now is not the time to impose yet another tax. And I agree with previous speakers, our school board needs a forensic audit. I speak at the school board meetings often, and there is a lot of waste and abuse, and it would be sexist of us to continue to give them money without asking where the money is already going. It's my understanding they have been given money by the governor's office over the last several years, and that money has not gone to teacher raises. There needs to be accountability at the school board. There needs to be an audit. We need to know where that money is going before we ask taxpayers, who are already burdened by all the taxes we already faced, many who are facing whether or not to sell their homes because they can no longer afford to live in Hillsborough County. So to burden us with another tax from the ballot in November, I still is unnecessary, and it is not good for our community, and it's not what we need at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Barbara Teppke. Is Ms. Teppke on the line?
My name, yes, I am.
Good morning.
My name is Barb Teppke, and I'm a retired teacher. Good morning. Please put the school district's millage referendum on November's ballot. The district needs extra funds to bring salaries for teachers and all education staff. Neighboring school districts to Hillsborough County pay around $5,000 more for starting teacher salaries. Our school district needs a chance to match that to be competitive for employees. Please give Hillsborough County citizens the chance to vote and put the millage referendum on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teppke. You have Deborah Setzer, and then Patricia Hall. Is Ms. Setzer on the line?
Yes, good morning. My name is Deborah Setzer, and I'm a parent of two public schoolchildren, a PTA member, and a voter. On Item B6, the case of Hillsborough County School Board versus Hillsborough County, I strongly urge this board not to pursue further legal action. Let the voters decide about the millage referendum in November 2024. Inflation and cost of living have made it increasingly difficult for teachers and staff. Without this millage referendum, we risk losing our best teachers to surrounding districts who pay better. Our teachers and students cannot wait for this referendum. We currently have a staffing shortage, and other surrounding districts have already tasked a millage proposal to better compensate teachers and staff. Let the voters decide if we wish to invest further in our children and teachers to remedy Florida being one of the lowest-paying states for teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Hall, is virtual?
This is Patricia Hall. I am past president of the League of Women Voters, and I am here to speak about the millage. All surrounding counties have higher teacher salaries, and none have teacher shortages like Hillsborough County. Our children cannot wait two more years for less crowded classrooms. Some of you have school-aged children who deserve the most excellent teachers available. These children are destined to be part of our economy, and don't we all want them to have the best educational opportunities to help our community? Let parents, teachers, and voters decide in November 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Chavez, virtual?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jonathan Chavez. I am running for Hillsborough County Commission in District 4, in part because, as a young person, I am deeply concerned by the extent to which this board has gone out of their way to target the public education system. Board ranks 50th in the nation, dead last in the country in terms of average teacher pay. The situation is so bad that it is still true despite the new state law that has increased teacher salaries. Now, here in Hillsborough, as has been said, we are behind most of our Bay Area peers in this metric for the simple fact that we have not passed a millage, like several dozen counties in Florida, including most of our Bay Area peers, have done so already. As a result, we have hundreds of teacher shortages, or hundreds of teacher vacancies, excuse me, a problem that we cannot expect to be corrected unless we address the root cause of raw bottom pay. Economic arguments aside, I am shocked by the openly undemocratic stance the board has taken with regards to the referendum. It would be one thing to have voted against the funding, but what the board has done is voted against the voter and their right to decide what to do with their tax dollars. I suspect that knowing how popular the teacher pay increase would have been in our community, some members of the board probably predicted that if it went to a vote, the millage referendum would pass. Disagreeing with that outcome, I think some members have decided to prevent the referendum from occurring, and if this was your lane of thinking, then I say shame on you. I urge the board to reconsider the previous decisions to keep the millage referendum off of the ballot and to comply with the recent judicial decision to require that the referendum be placed on the 2024 ballot in Hillsborough. Please allow the voters to decide. Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Last three speakers this morning. David Coleman, followed by Ellsworth Williams, and then Denise Herden.
Still no CC up there on the screen. $9 million in your media tech budget for 2024. I really hope you get that fixed. A lot happened in a week. Hope affordable housing was threatened with eviction. The UACDC is being evicted. A member based their housing vote on a staff answer about $144 million that can't be found. Last year's $183 million in affordable housing. Last year's $183 million in affordable housing can't be found either. Judge Peacock made a decision ordering this board to fulfill its duty and create a free and fair election. An elder predatory loan company, Pace, banned from operating in Hillsborough, has its lobbyists invited back. Thousands will fight yet again the expansion of 275 north of Hillsborough. Our $10 billion budget now goes behind closed doors until the fall. Conister said county jail is our largest detox and homeless shelter. That's on you. Hope has been integral, has been integral in trying to fix that. You imposed stronger requirements on nonprofits last year, yet not on yourselves with your slush fund, slush fund flag money that could cover the whole $10 million. A member was on the news stating that they autonomously represented 1.4 million people and would stop the millage. This board votes on things. It sounds unethical. He sure doesn't represent the people here today. Public schools need funding. We will get to have a free and fair vote. People over business. Pace can pick up their pace on its way out of here. Time was, this board worked for its citizens' needs. Sunshine citizens are coming back to swamp this board on why the 275 expansion is not what we need. The person bringing that forward for mothballs and other urban expansion ideas for South County has apparently been doing office hours in the urban core and should know exactly how urban sprawl leads to nothing but 233 dead a year, thousands in trauma centers, and 7,000 hit and runs. Trust me, people did not come here today to squabble over scraps from Shortshank's tables. There is an election coming, and the choices couldn't be more clear. This two-year experiment with the supposed red wave and governor appointee is about to end. My retirement chair is calling me. You people are just too weird for Hillsborough. Attacks on public schools, nonprofits, the supervisor of elections, perverting the planning commission future land use goals, the TPO weakening the HAB, the CAC, quite a two-year legacy.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Appreciate your comments. Last two speakers, Ellsworth Williams, and Denise Herndon. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, county commissioners, and good morning, my fellow veterans, Donna Sapanda and Joshua Worsel. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge that today is actually Purple Heart Day, August 7th, and I'm, we're actually doing something down in Tampa, but I'm, I'm in, in City Hall, but I'm here for an event I think is very important. Did you know that Florida has over 719,000 veterans who are over 65 years old? 42,000 of them are women veterans? Did you know that Hillsborough has the largest veteran population in the state of Florida? So we know that that also is going to talk about the veterans here in Hillsborough? Does anyone, does anyone know the services that are available in the community for the elderly veteran? Specifically for elderly veterans? Has anyone here cared for elderly veteran and asked themselves, where do I go? Who do I talk to? How do I take care of my mom and dad? Most people don't have to answer that question. That's why Veterans Council of Veterans is going to, is going to host our conference called Serving Elderly Veterans on 24 August in Tampa at the Edith Shroner Club. It's personal for me. My dad will be 88 next, 88 next week, August 13th. I'm going to go see him. I have been journeying with him for the, through this, through the system for the last 10 years, and I'm telling you, by being engaged, they're engaged. The conference will assemble together some substantial experts from the James J. Haley VA, the Florida Department of Veteran Affairs, Hillsborough County Veterans and Consumer Affairs, and Bay Area Legal, and more, including AARP, some of our partners. AARP is going to be here as seniors and, seniors in service. So if you have any questions about how to take care of that veteran, 24 August is the place to be. You have your questions and your answers, and I invite all the committees to come out there and see what the, what your citizens are saying that they need when it comes to serving elderly veterans. If I could mention, my name is Eldwood Graham, I'm the CEO of Veterans Council of Veterans on 3810 West Kennedy Boulevard. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Our last speaker this morning, Denise Herndon. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. I'm having problems finding the agendas. I only have the library to pull them up, and I thought I was speaking on affordable housing, but I can speak on this school issue if it's okay with Commissioner Hagan. This millage is not for teacher salaries. It's for a bonus. And all these people in here that have been confused about what this millage rate is really for, there's a difference between a bonus and a salary. And just as others have said in here, and it goes along with the Hillsborough County, we need to get in and find the waste. There's so much waste in the school board budget that there's enough money there to give teachers a salary raise, not a bonus raise. And everyone that is for this, the last time this was on the ballot, the voters voted it down, and that wasn't very long ago. So I commend the county commissioners, and it's the school board that is wasting taxpayers' money by taking this to court. It's not about our children not getting the right education. It's about teachers are leaving because of fear. It's not just the income, but you get the waste out of the county school board. Like I said, there's plenty. There needs to be a forensic audit in the school board and Hillsborough County $10 billion budget, and we can really put money where it needs to be put. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Appreciate your comments. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve consent? Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie, want to introduce the first item?
Yes, thank you. We do have a few minutes before the 10 o'clock, so we'll move to Item B2. This is to award a contract to Mental Health Services for Grace Point and Northside Behavioral Health Center, and Jean Early will present this, Item B2.
Good morning, Jean.
Good morning. I'm Jean Early. I'm the Department Director for Healthcare Services. This is, Agenda B2 is for SRT is designed to assist clients in enhancing and improving their level of overall functioning, as well as providing longer-term treatment to residents in their home and community. The target population, the organization SRT program, is a 12-bed unit providing services for adult residents 18 years of age or older residing in Hillsborough County diagnosed with severe chronic and persistent mental health services. This agenda item is request that you award and execute the sole source agreements for the short-term residential treatment program for one year with Mental Health Care, Inc., also doing business as Grace Point, and with Northside Behavioral Health Centers, Inc. Grace Point will be providing the forensic SRT program services at a not-exceed amount of $3,679,200, and Northside will be providing the non-forensic SRT program services at a not-exceed amount of $1,533,000. The combined not-exceed amount is $5,212,200. Just request that you award and execute the sole source.
Move approval? Got a motion approved, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Kemp. See no one in the queue. Please accord your vote, B2.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Let's continue with Item B4. This is to approve an amended restated American Rescue Plan Agreement with Tampa General Hospital.
Okay. Agenda Item B4 was request that you approve the amended and restated American Rescue Plan Act, funding agreement with Florida Health Centers, doing business as Tampa General Hospital. This allows for the equipment of a new patient tower in the flexible global emergency disease unit with funding, reimbursement for up to $5 million of previously allocated AARP funding, plus an additional amount of $1 million based on the dollar-for-dollar match of separate funding received from the city of Tampa. The agreement decreases the dollar-for-dollar match from the original of separate funding received from the city by $1,500,000 from $2,500,000 to $1,000, $1 million. Funding the agreement's included in the VOCC American Rescue Plan III Act Fund, and no additional funds are required by the county.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. No comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, got a first-time certain?
Yes, the first-time certain is Item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed Panyear, Plan Year 24 Action Plans. Brenda Brackens with Affordable Housing will present this item.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Brackens, and I'm the Affordable Housing Director. We're here to present Item D1, to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed Program Year 2024 Action Plan and a substantial amendment to Program Years 2016 through 2023 Annual Action Plans, and to close the public comment period that began on June 20th, 2024, and to adopt the Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan and substantial amendments to the annual action plans for Program Years 16 through 23 for the submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is a requirement of HUD for entitlement areas receiving federal funds. The substantial amendment includes funding year and budget adjustments for current projects and reallocation of federal funding from previous action plan years. This action will allow staff to reconcile to the HUD reporting system and to expand earliest received grant dollars in program income. All projects in the action plan and the substantial amendments were selected through a competitive RFP process. The estimated fiscal impact for the annual action plan is $10,755,157, which includes estimates based on the allocations received from HUD for our federal awards, which is our CDPG program, our home program, and our emergency solutions grant. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone that has signed up, but this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to D1? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Worsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am speaking to Page 14, which is the annual goals and objectives, and I'm wondering how, what led us to defining multifamily housing as our number-one goal rather than single-family housing?
Our goal, in order for us to do our con plan, we hire a third-party consultant that goes out and does a public participation process, which takes about five months, where they take comments and do interviews with the public, stakeholders, with commissioners, with boards, and based on that public participation process, they came up with those goals.
In 2020?
It was in, the process began in 2019, and it ended in 2021.
Okay. I'm just at the position that I believe this board's focus for the CDPG home ship dollars, I don't think ship is in here, that homeless prevention shouldn't be near the bottom of the list. It should be near the top of the list, and that single-family housing should be above multifamily housing. So if the public comment period is over, this can be amended today, correct? If the board voted in a majority to amend this annual goals and objective and resort that order?
No, HUD requires that we hire a consultant to amend our con plan, and there's absolutely no guarantee that if we do hire a consultant to go through this process, that HUD would accept it without an urgent need. These goals are typically set in stone for five years.
Typically or set in stone?
We can attempt to go to HUD and ask, you know, if we hired a consultant and went through this process again, we can ask for it, but there's no guarantee that they will make any changes to the goals.
Okay, and then so in 2025, we're going to be contracting another consultant, and at that time, they'll come and ask the board what they believe our priorities should be?
Right, but it's not just asking the board. They ask citizens as the public participation process. They ask citizens, stakeholders, there's an entire process that they go through. They send out surveys through Survey Monkey, and this, this will end, the con plan that we're in now will end September 30 of '26.
Okay. All right, yeah, I mean, I just, it feels like homeless prevention shouldn't be at the bottom of the list, so hopefully we can improve that in 2025 when we start the process. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
And I just want to say, it seems to me that multifamily, when you have 60,000 people that are on, 20,000 on lists, 60,000 that are rent burdened, that is the only way to address the problem significantly, and we also fund single-family homes in some ways with down payments and all kinds of assistance. I'm really proud of our affordable housing program, and thank you for explaining that because I, you know, didn't understand exactly. I know all of these have complicated processes behind them, but with that, I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion approved, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. No other comments. Please accord your vote on D1.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. D2?
Thank you, Brenda. We now have a series of public hearings. They all are separate, but they all are related to ambulance services as described. The first one is Item D2. Jean Early will take us through these. We do have representatives from the various entities here if you have any questions who have signed up to speak.
Good morning. Jean Early, Department Director for Healthcare Services. D2 is Agenda D2 that you consider a St. Joseph's application to modify its certificate of public convenience and necessity. That's COPCN short. It will allow the ambulances to be used in a wider scope for the primary purpose of transferring patients being admitted to and discharged from or transferred between facilities operated under Bay Care healthcare systems. This request follows the recommendations made for the hearing officer and the EMPC to hold this public hearing, and there's no financial impact. This is a public hearing. Representatives from St. Joseph are here.
All right, thanks, Jean. This is a public hearing. I see one person has signed up, Denise Herndon. Is Ms. Herndon still here?
My name is Denise Herndon. I thought that I was speaking off, this is off-agenda, correct?
This is a public hearing on?
I'm with my brain injury. I, I'm confusing all these things. It's a public hearing on which topic?
On COPCN. I suggest, why don't you come over to the side, and we'll have staff explain to you the items, and then they can help you on the one that you want to speak with. But that's okay. All right, would anyone else like to speak to D2? If not, can we have a motion?
Of approval?
Second.
Motion approved, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on D2.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Sorry. D3 is Agenda request that you consider St. Joseph's application to modify its COPCN. It'll allow for one additional ambulance for a total of three ambulances. It allows the ambulance to be used in a wider scope and facility operated under Bay Care health systems. The request follows recommendations made by the hearing officer and the EMPC for to hold a public hearing, and there's no financial impact. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. See one person that's signed up, Charles Ennis. Did you want to speak to this or just questions? All right, anyone else want to speak to D3? If not, that closes the public hearing.
Second.
Motion approved, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on D3.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Jean.
Agenda Item B4, request that you approve the amended and restated, oh, I'm sorry. Hold on just a second. Agenda D4 requests that you consider Brandon Hospitals application to modify its COPCN. It'll allow for two additional ambulances for a total of five ambulances. It'll also allow them to transfer in between and from facilities operated under HCA. This request follows recommendations made from the hearing officer and the EMPC to hold this public hearing. There's no financial impact. This is a public hearing. Representatives from Brandon HCA are here.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? I don't see anyone that closes the public hearing.
Second.
Motion approved, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote. Please accord your vote. D four.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, agenda D five, request that you consider Medtrans Corporation applications to modify, excuse me, to certificates of public convenience, C O P C N. It will allow the operation of one additional helicopter to be based in Lakeland and operated in partnership with Advent Health for a total of two ambulances. This request follows recommendations, again, made by the hearing officer and the E M P C. There's no financial impact. This is a public hearing. Representatives from Medtrans and Advent Health are here.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? I don't see anyone that closes the public hearing.
Move approval.
Motion approved, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on D five.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, good job, Jean. Next item.
Uh, thank you. The next item is item D six. This is a public hearing regarding the solid waste rate resolution. We are recommending that you continue this public hearing to August twenty-first at ten a.m. We have heard from the board of your various concerns on the rate increase, and so we would like to have the opportunity to evaluate that and provide you with additional options. With that, I'll turn it over to Damian Trammell.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Board. Damian Trammell, the Solace Management Department Director. Thank you for having me today. Item D six is the annual public hearing to adopt the solid waste rate resolution for two thousand twenty-five. Commissioners, we heard you loud and clear. Based on your feedback in our briefings and the significant economic challenges that we're currently navigating, we are requesting a continuance to this public hearing to August twenty-first. Again, this will allow us the necessary time to evaluate options that could reduce the recommended annual assessment amount. At this time, I'll turn it back over to the Chair.
All right, thank you. At the moment, I'll entertain a motion to continue, however, we do need to open up the public hearing and give an opportunity for those to speak if they'd like to. I just want to again state that we're going to continue this item until August twenty-first. I've got two people have signed up in person, Karen Leonardo and Alan Behrens. Please come forward.
I'm going to decline, also, better.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Karen Leonardo. I'm a real estate attorney up in Hernando County, and I'm not sitting at my desk today because a friend of mine who lives in Riverview, Florida, received the notice regarding the solid waste assessments. I'm working on a case outside of my normal scope of work for her because she's received duplication and assessments on tax rules as to a strip of land that's less than a tenth of an acre. This mistake originated in a, by a title company that's a subsidiary of a major builder who develops communities without, throughout our Hillsborough County. So every time she receives a notice, she's concerned that she's going to get a duplication and assessments to this little strip of land that has a separate tax parcel I D number because the water leave C D D and the storm of water assessment is duplicated, so they're paying twice for their home. Their home is adjacent to the strip of land, and they're now paying twice, and this is a sixteen thousand dollar burden that we have put on to my friend who is a nurse who works with veterans with spinal cord injuries. So I took this on for her to appear today to let you know that some, we're being, we're not getting access to these assessing authorities to get this mistake resolved. And I would just like to make sure that when this assessment goes through, it's only going to apply once to my client.
All right, Ms. Leonardo, if you'll come over to the side here, we'll have our staff get with you to determine the specifics, and we'll help you out.
Thank you. All right, we've got five folks that have signed up virtual.
Stephanie McGriff, is Miss McGriff on the line?
Chair, I only have Ram, Ramados on the line.
Okay, Mr. Ramados, you're up.
Mr. Ramados, can you hear us? Uh, he's not responding.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, okay, uh, so this is the first time in five years that rate increases have been handed over to the Hillsborough County residents. As of end of two thousand twenty-three, there's a net balance of two hundred and thirty-seven point seven-nine million dollars of the solid waste enterprise reserve fund. So what are we planning to use that money for? And why are we asking for forty dollars more this year? We did read the notice, the notice said for the proper disposal and proper collection. So the question is, was it improper all these years? For fifteen prior years, prior to two thousand twenty, the solid waste collection and disposal together were around two hundred and twenty dollars to two hundred and thirty dollars. Then starting from May of two thousand twenty, they have been steadily increasing for the last five years. This being the fifth year, we are proposing to increase it by an additional forty dollars. And can we have, can we have options? Can the citizens have options, just like Pinellas County does, and just like Pasco does? We should think about options, and we should think about using some of the money in the county operating budget towards solid waste purposes. End of my comment.
All right, thank you, sir, for your comments, and I'll have a staff member reach out to you to address your, your questions, and I'm sure they'll also come up during our next discussion on the twenty-first. Okay, that closes the public comment, or we're continuing it, actually. Can we have a motion to continue this till August twenty-first at ten a.m.? Motion to continue, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Cameron Sepeda? Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, next item.
Thank you. The next item is time certain for ten fifteen. This is item B five. This is to approve the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office contract to administer Hillsborough County School Speed Zone Enforcement Program, and Colonel Frank Lozad is here with the Sheriff's Office to present this item.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for having us. Like Ms. Wise says, my name is Frank Lozad, a McCourno with the Sheriff's Office, and thank you for having us here, and this is for us to recommend the board's approval for motion on B five. The Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office contracted with Red Speed Florida L L C to administer, to administer the Hillsborough County School Zone Speed Enforcement Program in accordance with Hillsborough County Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-two and Chapter Three Sixteen Florida State Statutes. H C S O issued a request for proposal under two thousand twenty-four dash oh-three for this program, selected and proposed vendor, and is presenting the contract between H C S O and Red Speed Florida L L C to the B O C C for approval as required by the ordinance and state law. However, the county was not involved in the R F P or vendor selection process and is not a party to this contract. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, and, and if we don't do this, the alternative is that you'd have to hire many bodies that are much more expensive, if we even have the funds. It's, it's almost impractical, and I drive through two school zones, even I had reservations at first about promoting the government recording, um, things like this, but the, the fact of matter is that all the footage gets deleted, um, there's a notification period, and that all of the money has to go back into the program to support those local schools and, and the crossings. Isn't that right? Is that all the money has to go back into that area?
Yes, sir. The Sheriff's Office is not receiving any money, it's all coming straight back to Hillsborough County.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I pass two school zones, um, every day on my way to county center, and it's everybody, everybody is speeding through the school zone, it seems, so I will move for approval, and thank you for this initiative.
Okay, we got a motion approved, Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Miller?
Um, I just wanted to comment on this and, and just thank Commissioner Owen, I think he's the one that brought this forward before, but it's just going to increase safety of our children, our crossing guards, and anyone that comes in in contact. I also, like Commissioner Wostel mentioned, this is a net zero cost to Hillsborough County taxpayers, and I wanted that to be on the record.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Kemp.
And I'll just say I'm very, one hundred percent in support of this. We have a terrible problem. Hillsborough County is number two in the nation, time after time after time again, for pedestrian and bicycle deaths, and it's a very, very serious problem. I was on this board when a student from Chamberlain High School was killed. Uh, I don't know if I was on this board, but I do remember two students that were tragically hit at Hillsborough Avenue. I don't even know that this would protect them because it was in front of the school, but they were walking to school, and I believe one of those students died, and the second was badly injured sisters, I believe. So it's, it's very much needed reminder for everyone, and a very small burden for anyone to be slowing down and paying attention around schools. It should be something that we all do, but I, I'm very supportive of this.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. No one else in the queue, please accord your vote on B five.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. We do have another item for ten thirty, time certain, and it seems like Mr. Morrison is here, so if you could waive your rules to take items E one and B one?
Camera motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on waiving the rules.
Chairman Hagan, Commissioners, Ms. Wise, good morning.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Morning, Tom.
Good morning, I'm Tom Morrison, um, General Counsel for your Industrial Development Authority, and I'm pleased to present to you today a proposal for your approval of a one-point-nine billion dollar conduit financing by the Industrial Development Authority for Bay Care. A little bit of history, the I D A has been financing partners with local hospitals going back to its inception in the nineteen seventies. We previously issued bonds for St. Joseph's Hospital System and South Florida Baptist Hospital, which all are now under the Bay Care umbrella, as was the case when I came before you in two thousand twenty for approval of a one-point-two billion dollar financing for Bay Care. It's a multi-county financing transaction where, as it was in two thousand twenty, we have several other counties involved, which I'll get into a little bit more in a minute. And as was the case in two thousand twenty, where the actual issuance was much less than the one-point-two billion approved, we expect that this issuance will be significantly less than the one-point-nine billion. Of the one-point-nine figure, approximately six-hundred-and-ninety-one million will be utilized to finance and refinance hospital facilities in Hillsborough. The balance will be spread among four other counties, being Pinellas, Pasco, Manatee, and Polk. As is always the case with the I D A, this is a conduit financing. It's non-recourse to the authority and the county.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website at W W W dot WebEx dot...
And there are no public funds of any kind being used for this. It's going to be repaid solely with funds generated by Bay Care, so there's no tax dollars, no public funds at all. We'll be including up to three-hundred-and-twenty-eight million dollars of refunding existing bonds. The hospitals in Hillsborough that are being involved are St. Joseph's Main Campus on Martin Luther King Boulevard, St. Joseph's Children's Hospital on M L K, St. Joseph's Women's Hospital on M L K. This includes construction of a new freestanding children's hospital for St. Joseph's on their main campus, a new proton therapy center. It will also include financings at St. Joseph's Hospital South in Riverview, St. Joseph's Hospital North on Van Dyke Road, and South Florida Baptist Hospital, which will include a new replacement hospital in Plant City, and also the Barto Regional Medical Center. In Pinellas County, the financing will cover the Meese and Morton Plant Systems, as well as St. Anthony's. In Pasco, it will cover the Bay Care Pasco Facility on Bruce B. Downs and Wesley Chapel. In Manatee, it will include a new hospital to be built in Palmetto, and in Polk, renovations and improvements at Winter Haven Hospital. Also, and finally, there will be several freestanding emergency room facilities constructed in Hillsborough, in both Riverview and Brandon, in Polk County, Lakeland and Davenport, in Pinellas County, in St. Pete, in Manatee and Bradenton, and in Pasco and Wesley Chapel. We will have inter-local agreements among Hillsborough County I D A and the other four counties, as was the case previously, and the reason we're hosting is for an economy of scale. Since we were the financing entity in two thousand twenty, Bay Care will save a considerable amount in issuance costs by having us do it again here. If we didn't do it, one of the other counties would be financing in our county, and that's pursuant to the State Interlocal Cooperation Act, which encourages us to do things like this to save money for the, for the users. The I D A found this to be a great benefit to our county and our region. They approved it unanimously, and they recommend it to you for approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know Mr. Petrovic is here as well, and there are, there's a Bay Care representative in case you have questions.
All right, Tom, appreciate the presentation. Any questions, comments? If not, can we have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. I don't see anyone in the queue, so with that, please accord your vote on E one, or B one, excuse me.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, Bonnie.
Thank you. Our next item is item B six. This is to discuss and direct the county attorney's office on what legal action to take in the case of Hillsborough County School Board versus Hillsborough County. Rob Braisel from the county attorney's office will present this item.
Good morning, Rob.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. Rob Braisel, Chief Assistant County Attorney, Litigation Division. As the board is no doubt aware, the school board on July twenty-third filed a single-count lawsuit against the county sounding in mandamus relief, where essentially, they asked the court to decide that the school board was the entity that had the discretion to set the time for the election on their property tax referendum. On August second, the trial court issued its ruling essentially granting the school board's request and determining that this board should meet by August thirteenth in order to pass a resolution that would allow the school board property tax referendum to go on the ballot in November of this year. So this item is before you now, Commissioners, from our office, essentially asking you for a few points of direction in terms of whether or not this case is going to continue to proceed forward. If it does, there's a few points that we need some, some direction on in terms of how we handle the case from this point forward. The first question, of course, is the biggest one, and that's whether or not our office will be directed to file a notice of appeal with the Second District Court of Appeal. What that would entail, given the very short timeframe that we have before the supervisor of elections, August twentieth ballot printing deadline, would be the filing today of a notice of appeal, and also the filing today of a motion for emergency consideration, and essentially, in that motion, we would outline to the court what the issues are, of course, and what the time exigencies are. If that question is answered no, in other words, if you do not authorize us to take that action today and file the notice of appeal and the emergency motion, then we don't have to get to the other questions. Our involvement in the case will basically end at that point, and we would be left with the court's order about meeting on the thirteenth and passing the resolution in order to set the referendum on the November ballot. If the vote to appeal is affirmative, if, if we are directed to file the notice of appeal and the motion for emergency consideration, there's a couple other points that we want to make sure we have clear direction from the board before we move forward. The first one is about the automatic stay, and let me first quickly walk you through what that whole issue is about, what the automatic stay entails, and where it comes from. When government entities... When government entities file a notice of appeal from pretty much anything that the trial court does, an automatic stay attaches. An automatic stay basically is kind of what it sounds like. It's a stopping of the trial court's order. So whatever is in the trial court's order is not going to be enforced. That would include presumably the requirement to meet on the 13th to pass the resolution to put the referendum on the ballot. Now, we have to anticipate the next moves in the case with respect to the automatic stay. So once we file the notice of appeal, the automatic stay attaches. What we anticipate happening next is that the school board would immediately move to lift the automatic stay. And what we would anticipate happening after that is that the trial court likely would grant that motion because that would be consistent basically with what the trial court has ruled so far. So if the trial court granted the school board's motion to lift the stay, we're back into the position of the trial court's order being enforceable, the August 13 deadline, passing the resolution, et cetera. But then, the issue of the automatic stay then moves up to the Second District Court of Appeal because we've already filed our notice of appeal. And at that point, we would need direction from the board that we could file whatever responses and motions that we would need at the Second District or at the trial court level to keep the automatic stay in place. Now, this question is kind of related to the notice of appeal. It's somewhat consistent that if we are appealing typically, typically, I don't want to speak for the board, but typically you would then, in our position, be doing whatever you need to do to keep the automatic stay in place while the Second District is reviewing the merits of the appeal. So that's question two, is whether question one's the notice of appeal. Question two is if we're filing the notice of appeal, are we authorized to take whatever action we need to in order to keep the automatic stay in place? And then question three is really a little bit about the briefing schedule. So because of the time crunch that we have here with the ballot printing deadline, we're going to propose to the Second District, if we appeal, a very aggressive briefing schedule. So the lawyers on the board will know that a typical journey through the Second District Court of Appeal lasts about a year. By the time you prepare the record and you file all the briefs and there's motions for extension and all kinds of other things, it typically lasts about a year. We would try and get through the Second District in about 12 days. So in order to do that, we would propose, as I said, a very aggressive briefing schedule, which would have our initial brief on the merits filed tomorrow. Typically, from the time of filing a notice of appeal, you have about 70 days to file your brief. We would file our brief tomorrow. We would then propose that the school board, in response, would file their answer brief by Monday. This is actually very similar to the schedule that they proposed at the trial court level, where we were again on a very expedited schedule and everybody moved quickly and got everything filed in time. This is not much different, and really, the arguments have already been made. All of the motions and responses have been filed with the trial court. They're not really going to change at the appellate level, so it shouldn't be that heavy a lift for the school board to respond by Monday. And just by the way, I did speak with their counsel to let them know what could be coming so that they weren't caught by surprise, that that was a possibility, that obviously I didn't know how the board would vote, but I put them on notice that that would be what we would be proposing. So the question, though, on the briefing schedule, question three, is the typical briefing schedule goes this way. Whoever is appealing, which in this case would be the county, usually speaks first and speaks last. And that means whoever is appealing files their initial brief, the party who prevailed at the trial court, which in this case is the school board, files an answer brief. They get to speak once, one time. And then the party who filed the brief, which is us, gets the last word and gets to file a reply brief to the school board's answer brief. In this case, filing a reply brief is going to chew up another, at least, day or two on the schedule that the court could use to resolve the case. And most likely, by the time we file our brief, school board files its brief, everything would have been said, everything would have been argued for the second time. I mean, the case sites and case authorities are not going to change. The statute that we're arguing about is not going to change. So unless we see something very unusual in the school board's answer brief, we would prefer to waive, to potentially waive the filing of that reply brief and let the court have the extra time to resolve the case. Of course, if we see something that, you know, they've raised something new, something different that we need to respond to, then naturally we would do that. But we just want to make sure that if that's the course we go down, you're not taken by surprise if we give that extra time to the court to rule. So basically, the summary is if the vote is yes on the appeal, today we file the notice of appeal and the motion for emergency consideration. Tomorrow, we file our brief. And then we wait to see what the Second District tells us, if anything. They can rule whenever they want. They don't have to file, they don't have to follow any time schedule or any time crunch that we're under. But past experience with them, a lot of times they are very responsive to matters like this that are very much in the public eye and very much of concern to the community. So it's a possibility that they'll respond to us quickly. They may then set maybe a different time for the school board to file its brief. They may change the schedule a little bit that we've proposed, but we will have already filed our brief by tomorrow. So that's how it would go, at least for today and tomorrow. And then we kind of see where we're going and what the court has in store after that. And of course, you know, Christine and I can answer any questions if you have any.
All right, thanks, Rob. Appreciate the thorough explanation. Commissioner Wosel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm the one that brought the original motion, and I believe it's appropriate for me to bring this motion. I'll just, a couple of quick things that were mentioned in public comment. One is that they hope we're getting expert legal counsel. We absolutely received expert legal counsel, and I think you and County Attorney Beck for that. The other was from the Hillsborough Education Foundation, where they said that we should try to work with the school board, and it was our county attorney who expertly brought up the point to me that the school board refused to ever even acknowledge my motion, which was to work with the school board. They just outright disregarded it and went straight to lawsuits. So I do appreciate you and your office so much in this, and I do believe that you guys were absolutely right. Your precedence was outright ignored, in my opinion. You didn't even get an opportunity to argue it, as we all heard, which is even more of a pressing matter why I believe we have to move for appeal. So Commissioner Hagan, I do see two more people in the queue. So I have four motions, three which will accomplish the notice of appeal. One is required of the other, so I will be happy to do them in order. Next is to require the necessary action for the automatic stay, which we, or can be all certain, would happen. And then third is the ability to waive a reply brief if deemed appropriate, if we don't find anything unusual in their response. So if you're willing to hear the first motion, that would, if it fails, then there's no need to hear the rest of them. So I will motion to direct counsel to file an expedited notice of appeal along with a motion of emergency consideration.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Wosel, second Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. Commissioner Miller, do you want to speak to the motion?
I do, thank you, Chair. I'm going to be supporting this. I understand that we have a requirement as the board to place the referendum on the ballot, but I believe that this board has the duty to consider all interests when deciding this matter for our constituents, Hillsborough County, cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and of course, the school board. I stand firm in the belief that this board is, if we were to be involved, the Florida legislature must have intended that we had a role to play. The number one complaint from my constituent has been increased expenses, a tough economy, the burden being placed on families and their ability to manage finances. If I have a possibility of postponing this to a matter of time when the economy is better, I need to exercise it for the people I serve. I also wanted to go on the record in public comment, people talked about the expenses of this. Our expense is going to be noted as $300 and it's going to be paid at the self-insurance fund. From a very personal perspective, I'd also like to address the fact that some have said that my opposition to this tax referendum is a position against our incredible Hillsborough County school teachers and administration, but nothing could be further from the truth. As a mother of two children who spent all of their years in Hillsborough County public schools and one that currently still is, I know firsthand how great our teachers are and how important it is to attract and keep quality educators at the front of our classrooms. I also agree that they need to be fairly compensated for their skills and efforts. The leaders in charge of Hillsborough County public school budget have failed us, and simply increasing taxes to outrun their failures is irresponsible. Hillsborough County Public Schools needs accountability for the correction to the excessive waste within their budget and corresponding clarity around what will actually address the true issue of undercompensation. Personally, I'm troubled that they feel it's appropriate to ask Hillsborough County taxpayers to bear the burden of this failed leadership.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I would just say, all of our surrounding counties have also put this forward without opposition, and the voters have approved it, and they all have, it belongs, really, this decision belongs to the voters to do. And so therefore, we are doing less for salaries in Hillsborough County. All the surrounding counties have higher salaries, and we have more teacher shortages here in Hillsborough County. So we're making ourselves a county where, instead of in Plant City, a teacher teaching in Plant City can go 10 miles across to Lakeland and have a better opportunity. Same thing happens at the lines all over the place, and that's why we're having our teacher shortages here. And I'd also like to point out the fact that now Florida, Florida, and I'll just say, I've been around for a long time, and I remember when we used to say, "Thank God for Mississippi and Alabama, that we're not last in everything." Well, guess what? We're now last in average teacher salaries in the nation. We're number 50. Alabama has moved up to 23. So we're not competitive with Alabama. When you, you know, net the salaries out with costs, we're actually $5,000 behind Alabama for, or, I'm sorry, behind Mississippi, which is 48, for what we're paying. So statewide, we're doing terribly to compensate our teachers. But in Hillsborough County, we're doing especially terribly. We're doing terribly and have done so for decades on capital and on salaries. And I would say, let the matter rest here. This vote belongs to the voters. So I will be voting no.
Commissioner Wosel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually very hopeful that somebody today would bring up the half-truth of the one milage rate in our surrounding counties. I have heard the superintendent and many school board members of our community continuously espouse that half-truth to the cameras and to the media. But the reality is, is that our surrounding counties do have the one milage rate, and they handle all of their budget under that one milage rate. Those surrounding counties that they reference do not have a full half-cent sales tax that is worth almost $200 million a year to subsidize their infrastructure needs. Those surrounding counties do it all under that one milage rate. And since it was already brought up, I was hoping that no one would say that this needs to go to the voice of the voters, because I will remind three members on this board, Mr. Chair, that personally attacked a member of this board when he was simply trying to bring up single-member voting districts for Hillsborough County. Assaults on his character, his ability to run his office were immediately lobbied by sitting members of this board on him simply wanting to put to the ballot to give the voters their voice. So I'm just, I'm very challenged at the hypocritical nature of that argument would even be presented today, because it's, I guess it's only democracy when the Democratic Party has what vote they want to vote on, but it's not democracy when they don't get to vote on what they want. I'm just trying to figure that reality out that we're left with. You guys were not okay with single-member district going to the voters so that they could have better, closer local representation in Hillsborough County. You rejected that, and now you have taken an opposite stance today on that exact matter. And I believe that, I believe that that's something that should be heard. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Cohen?
I'm going to leave that last item for another day. I think the redistricting and this are really apples and oranges. There's an entire process that deals with that. I, it is no surprise to anyone, agree with Commissioner Kemp, I'm not going to support the appeal. I think that the independently elected school board has asked for this to be placed on the ballot and that the people ought to make the decision of whether or not they want to vote it up or vote it down. But my question here really is, Mr. Brazel, is to you. So we have this court order that will be automatically stayed if there is an appeal. It's possible that through the course of the weekend, as the litigation winds its way the way that you described, it's, I suppose, possible that the Second DCA could lift the stay without issuing an order, correct?
That is possible.
Okay. So we have a land use meeting on Tuesday, August 13. If that stay were lifted and we were under the force of the writ of mandamus at that time, we still have an opportunity to vote on that on the 13th. There wouldn't have to be any, like, notice requirement that would prevent us from having that vote if the stay were lifted.
Not that I'm aware of, Commissioner.
Okay. So as I said, I'm not going to support the motion, but I think it's important, if the motion does pass, that we keep our eye on this stay issue and recognize that we do have an opportunity to vote on it if it's enforced on Tuesday, the 13th.
All right, thank you. I'm going to state, repeat quickly what I did at the last meeting. I do not question the need of the district. My daughter will be a rising senior at Hillsborough High School, and she's come home in the past stating, you know, the challenges that they have there with retaining teachers. I do not question that. I know that our teachers are at a competitive disadvantage with other districts. However, my issue is the timing. People are really hurting right now. Inflation has eroded our buying power, insurance increases, TICOs having increases. We just, this morning, continued a solid waste rate increase to our next meeting. And so to me, that's why I supported the original motion to postpone it until two years from now. Ideally, the economy will be in a much better condition, and candidly, the tax request would have a much better chance of passing if the economy is in a much better position. So I'm going to support the motion. Commissioner Wosel, could you just repeat it again?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Direct counsel to file an expedited notice of appeal along with a motion of emergency consideration.
Okay, the motion was Commissioner Wosel, second Commissioner Miller, or Miller, right? Oh, Cameron Cepeda, I'm sorry. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp and Myers voted no.
All right, Commissioner Wosel?
All right, the second motion, Mr. Chair, is direct counsel to take all necessary legal action for the automatic stay of the trial court's order to remain in place.
Okay, then motion by Commissioner Wosel, second Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. And again, this was suggested by Rob, if we move toward, if we move forward with the appeal, that this was the necessary action. So we've got a motion and a second. I don't see anyone in the queue, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp and Myers voted no.
Commissioner Wosel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I motion to direct counsel to waive the filing of a reply brief if they deem that to be appropriate after reviewing the school board's answer brief.
All right, it's a motion by Commissioner Wosel, second Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Myers voted no.
Do you have another one?
I do. I have one final item, and this one is specifically, it was just mentioned, that Judge Peacock ordered a writ of mandamus against the duly-elected Board of County Commissioners. For my final item, and I understand the county attorney disagrees with this request, which has nothing to do with my full trust of her and her office, is the topic of outside counsel. I believe it is in the best interest of Hillsborough County to hire outside counsel in what appears to be an extraordinary in what appears to be an extraordinary order by Judge Peacock. To quote some of my colleagues and the school board members, this seems to be in a direct attack on democracy, nay, a direct attack on our constitutional republic. She has essentially told seven elected officials how they must vote. Although I am not a lawyer, I have read the Constitution, and this instinctively seems to clearly violate the separation of powers doctrine. My understanding, and I haven't read the briefings in the case in full, is that less extraordinary relief, like declaratory relief, would have been more appropriate. We hired outside counsel to defend the county commission in Emerson versus Hillsborough. We also hired outside counsel in Juroch versus Hillsborough. Speaking of Juroch versus Hillsborough, I was in the courtroom for the entire hearing. I watched an incredibly poised attorney meticulously break down the county's then-outside counsel, to the point that he had our counsel arguing with the judge over the definitions of insinuate and assume. That's a true story. After research, I have found that this attorney actually used to be a judge on the Second District Court of Appeals, where this very appeal will be heard. He is a specialist in this appellate process. It is for that reason alone that I believe that we unturn every stone in this very critical matter to protect the separation of powers. I motion to direct the county's attorney to work with the law offices of Lawson, Huck, Gonzalez in contracting with Attorney Sam Solario as outside counsel, and to utilize the pre-budgeted funds for contracting outside counsel. Thank you very much.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Wosel to engage outside counsel, second Commissioner Miller and Cameron Sepeda. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I just find this very inappropriate to bring, first of all, outside counsel when we have such qualified an expert inside counsel here at the county, as strong as it could possibly be. Those other cases are land use cases that are very, very different than what this is. But secondly, to just unilaterally choose who that counsel shall be and bring it here for us to employ that outside counsel instead of through any process or consult with our team if they felt like they needed that, I would need to have this come from the county attorney's office. So I absolutely won't be supporting this.
Commissioner Cohen?
I think Commissioner Kemp is totally right. I think that this is inappropriate. I think to name an outside attorney without any kind of procurement process at all is putting the cart in front of the horse, and I think that that's a mild, a mild way of saying it. I think this is highly irregular, and I also think it adds now a cost element to this entire thing, which, for people that complain constantly about the abuse of taxpayer dollars, to just throw it on something that hasn't even been vetted, when everyone, I think the one area that we've agreed on is how well-represented the county's been in this matter. So I will not be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Wosel?
Emerson versus Hillsborough and Juroch versus Hillsborough were not land use cases. Those were tax cases, which I'm very surprised to hear come from one of the very commissioners that voted to utilize outside counsel in those tax cases. This has precedence, this is not, this is no longer about fighting over a tax. This is a judge that has seemed to believe that she can unilaterally supersede the clear votes of Hillsborough County's residents in putting seven duly-elected officials to make these decisions. I believe that she has breached the separation of powers, and that is one of the main reasons that I believe we should use every single asset available to us in this regard, for that reason only. There's clear precedence, again, this has nothing to do with our county attorney's office. We used outside counsel, again, in two tax cases that were us simply going against citizens that were suing the county.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob, thank you so much for your overview and giving us all the details. Christine Beck, thank you. I've known Rob and Christine during my tenure here. And to sit here this morning to listen, that we want to go to outside counsel, where I know the capability of our staff. Right now, we have other staff that are listening to us as we speak, as board members. Just think about it, when staff is before us, and we said, "Go out to seek outside counsel", when we have the best, and won so many cases for Hillsborough County, standing right here in front of us, I would suggest that, that we allow the county attorney office to select outside counsel, not be told or be voted on who should be the outside counsel for this. It doesn't, to me, appear very good for us that we're told that we must use this counsel. Thank you.
Commissioner Wosel?
Once again, in a, in my opinion, stunning display of hypocrisy, you used outside counsel for Juroch versus Hillsborough. I don't, I mean, I'd be happy to ask the chair for a back-and-forth if somebody would like it. Why was it okay for us to use outside counsel for on the, on the tax that, that you wanted to be and go to a vote? But it's not okay for us to use outside counsel now.
All right, Commissioner Myers, and then I'm gonna make a couple of comments, and we'll vote.
I'm not saying, who, my question is, let the county attorneys decide.
Okay, and first of all, I have the utmost respect for, for Rob and his ability to, to argue this case. At the same time, it's not uncommon for us to utilize outside counsel. I would normally agree with Commissioner Myers to let, have the county attorney's office choose that, and I don't have any idea who Commissioner Wosel just mentioned. I don't know the law firm, I don't know the individual attorney, so I couldn't tell you if it's good or bad. I'm assuming they're, they're exceptional attorneys, or he wouldn't bring it forward, but I don't know who they are. The reality is, we have a time crunch, and we really just don't have the opportunity to vet and take the time to follow the typical process. So that's why I don't have a problem moving forward with this. It sounds like, well, unless I'm mistaken, all three of Commissioner Wosel's previous motions complied with the recommendations of Rob, so it's not like we're going in a different direction. We're just asking for someone with, I guess, appellate experience to assist us in this endeavor, and I don't, I don't see any, any harm in that. And if we had the luxury of time, I would agree. Let's, kind terms of, if we can make the recommendation, we go from there, but as we all know, we don't. So, I don't see anyone else in the queue. We got a motion, Commissioner Wosel, second, Commissioner Miller and Cameron Sepeda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
Okay. Rob, anything else, or Christine, anything else?
Yeah, very briefly, if we could, if we could get some guidance from the board, given the decision you just made, if you, if you have issues about, you know, normally there's things that are negotiated, such as the hourly rates and a cap perhaps, or something, is that, do you have any guidance on that?
Commissioner Wosel?
What caps were utilized in Juroch versus Hillsborough?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but typically, we've had very low, but most of our outside counsel rates are negotiated at 275 an hour, which is very low, but it's because it's gone through a competitive process, and so, you know, I just don't want to embark on this, and I'm assuming that this motion is to turn everything over, the briefing, the oral argument, if anything, everything.
If any oral arguments come up. I mean, I guess, I guess my direction would be to utilize the, the same protocols and standards that were used in Juroch versus Hillsborough. I mean, that seems to make the most sense.
Do you have, do you have any issues with that?
Well, I have no issue with that. I'm just, is, if they were to object, I'm just concerned what I would do then if they don't like those terms. You know, contracts are two-way streets, both sides have to agree. And maybe, maybe a way to handle this is to, in this case has already been briefed, the arguments have already been drafted, all the authorities have been cited, if you want to maybe consider a cap and a high end of what you would agree to on the, on the hourly rate, perhaps, you know, up to something, and then that way, we will have guidance that won't run against what this board wants.
I know you said that we typically have a, what'd you say, 275?
That's what most of our outside counsel contracts are now. I honestly don't remember in Juroch, we could find that out, and if you just want me to match it, it's easy enough to go pull that contract. But typically, like with, with, we don't have that many outside counsel contracts, but the rate is 275, and also for our bond counsel.
Well, I would certainly prefer for, you know, consistency, if at all possible.
Yeah.
I will defer to Commissioner Wosel since he made the motion.
I believe that in the, the school board, school board member Han asked for a cap of $50,000. I think you're pre-budgeted up to 100, and I would just say that, that we could give the flat cap, which it sounds like we shouldn't be anywhere near, since most of the work is done, and hopefully, we don't have oral arguments. But I would just recommend that we do the same thing, and then if the hourly rate structure that they can agree on works into that, that cap, then we just go with that.
Okay, is that a motion?
There's a motion.
Motion, Commissioner Wosel, if you have a second. Second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, so, we're gonna agree here, after all the complaining about all the resources and money, to something like 50 or 100,000 on a case that already has every, all this work done and prepared. I find it stunning. But does this motion include a $175 per an hour cap? Is that, I'd like to separate it out, actually. I'll make a substitute motion, for $275 max per hour. That's it.
Okay, the motion by Commissioner Kemp, is there a second? All right, motion fails for lack of a second. Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I'm not voting for anything related to it. I think it's a flagrant waste of taxpayer dollars.
It is, totally.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Wosel, second, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
Okay, thanks, Rob, appreciate it. All right, Bonnie, next item?
The next item is item F1. This is various board appointments to, I believe, four different boards. And Glenda's here to go take you through those, those appointments.
The first board that we have for appointment is the Building Board of Adjustments. We have two applicants and one vacancy. Please choose one. Commissioner Hagan?
Green.
I'm sorry.
Green?
Green. Commissioner Myers?
Green.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
If you can come back to her.
Okay.
She had to go to her book.
Commissioner Cohen?
Rushing.
Commissioner Miller?
Rushing.
Commissioner Kemp? Commissioner Wosel?
Green.
So we three to three?
Yes. I'll need Commissioners Sepeda to vote.
If we can give her just a minute. If we don't hear the door open, we'll go to the next item.
Commissioner Sepeda is our first board for appointment, Building Board of Adjustments. We have two applicants, we need to select one.
Number one.
Number one. The next board, we have the Healthcare Advisory Board. We have two applicants and one vacancy. Please choose one. Commissioner Hagan?
Wilson.
Commissioner Myers?
I'm gonna, three, number three.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda? Commissioner Cohen?
Number four, Wilson.
Commissioner Miller?
I'm not sure what's happening, I'm, I'm sorry.
Healthcare Advisory Board, that will be our second.
Sorry, two. I'm sorry, four, excuse me.
Commissioner Kemp? Commissioner Wosel?
Three.
Okay. Dr. Jason Wilson. The next board is the Hillsborough County Hospital Authority. We have seven applicants and six vacancies. Commissioner Hagan?
Five, six, seven, eight, 10, and 11.
Commissioner Meyer?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Five, six, seven, eight, 10, and 11.
Commissioner Cohen?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 11.
Commissioner Miller?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Commissioner Kemp?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 11.
Commissioner Wosel?
Six through 11.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Commissioner Myers, you only voted for five, you can vote for one more. Okay, I realize that, thank you. Okay, so, the appointments go to five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 11. The final board is Housing Finance Authority. We have three applicants and one vacancy. Please choose one. Commissioner Hagan? Commissioner Myers?
Thirteen.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Thirteen.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thirteen.
Commissioner Miller?
Thirteen.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thirteen.
Commissioner Wosel?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, Michael Kelly.
If we can have a motion to confirm, so moved?
So moved, second.
All right, please record your vote. Motion to confirm.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Just to confirm, it was Wosel for the first and Kemp for the second? Yes. All right, Bonnie, next item?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Wosel's item, item F2, regarding considering establishing a public hearing for the implementation of a PACE resolution and approval of interlocal agreements in Hillsborough County.
Commissioner Wosel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I placed this issue on today's agenda because I believe PACE is an important option for Hillsborough County residents to make needed home repairs who otherwise would not be able to do so. My family themselves, growing up, I think I've mentioned this before, so poor, we didn't know it, would have been somebody that would not have probably been afforded a loan for critical infrastructure repairs on our home, and would have needed to leverage the value of an option like PACE for things such as an air conditioner in Tampa, Florida, where we have heat indexes up to 110, 115 degrees, which of we have heat indexes up to 110, 115 degrees, which of course is deathly for all of the many senior citizens that we have residing in our county. We just had a tropical system come through the area this weekend, and there are likely many residents who need to make home improvement right now. But unfortunately, PACE is not an option for them because the county does not have a PACE program anymore. Since times of the essence, I amend my original motion after confirming with the county attorney's office that we do not need for resolutions, we do not need a public hearing. In fact, I did find out, I was informed that when the county's PACE program was terminated several years ago by previous board, it was done unexpectedly without public notice and without a public hearing. I have gone extensively through the new legislation that has passed for this program. Even its biggest critics from Pasco County have now come back around and praise the legislature's work on the many consumer protections that have put in place. I'm completely open to amendments and even more consumer protections if you have them of mind. I, I actually have a motion to amend my own resolution for, for two more consumer protection items that I believe should be in there. So prior to me making my motion, I will just open it up. I see there's a couple of people that want to speak, and I ask for your support in what I believe now is a good bona fide program that we can put true guardrails in place. It's the most important thing to me with all of the legislation that's going on, lawsuits, that we put, we're in control of the process and we put good guardrails in place for a good program and that we protect consumers in this program. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Wostol, I actually agree wholeheartedly with what you said about the fact that I do think these programs have a place. I, ever since, there's been so much arguing about PACE over the years, but one of the things that has always stuck out to me is there just are people who do not qualify for any other type of financing, and what are they supposed to do when they need a roof? And, and you simply cannot stay in the house without it, and there's no other way to pay for it. The biggest objection always to these programs were the consumer protections and the fact that there were bad actors in the market that had taken place, that had taken advantage of unwary, or wary consumers, unwary consumers. My question, I think, is I would really like to, along with any vote that we take, get a briefing on what is in the new legislation, just so that we and the public have a chance to hear it. Because my understanding, and I have not done any research on this, I'm simply going off what I've been told, is that there are new consumer protections that have been, that have been put in place, and that there are entities and interests that were against this type of thing before that are now open to it as a result of these new protections. So what I would ask is that whatever you're going to do, go have a, an informational briefing along with it so we can understand what's been done, and if we have any ideas on anything additional, we can raise it. But it may be that, it may be that the safeguards really are in place and that we can move forward with something that we can feel comfortable with.
Commissioner Kemp?
So I'm a little confused about your request, Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Wostol. So are you planning to pass this now without any of that information? Because none of it's here about what the legislature did or not. We have, some interlocal agreements are the only backup in this, and I just, where did those interlocal agreements come from? How were they drafted? And are you planning to come back then and not have this vote today, but present with, to this county commission, what the legislation is and what consumer protections are in, in here now?
Commissioner Wostol?
Oh, I have zero interest in responding to Commissioner Kemp, but I would say that I'm Commissioner Cohen. I think that, yeah, I mean, the, the goal is to put forward the resolution, and in the motion, it, it, this is, the interlocal agreements are simply there as a reference point for county staff and direction is that the, any parties would still have to come back, they would still have to agree to an interlocal agreement with county, county has to approve it, we have to approve those interlocal agreements. And if there's providers that this board, for instance, is unhappy with, they don't believe that they're meeting standards, then, then they don't get an interlocal agreement. This completely empowers staff and the commissioners to protect the program. I, as far as, I mean, I did, I did put the whole, all of the information up there before so that there was no confusion about everything that was being presented. In, in the, in the resolution itself, it does, it does reference the exact state statutes. I mean, is it, I guess, I guess the question was, should I be, from Commissioner Kemp, was should I be responsible for each commissioner reviewing the information that I present and the state statutes that are presented in there? I'm not going to speak to that. I don't really know. But, yeah, I mean, there's, like, for instance, I'm going to be amending item 11, which all of the new protections are absolutely in the resolution if, if you would have taken the time to read them. For instance, the legislature capped the value, the lifetime value of how long something can be assessed, so they can't go in there. Well, first, they capped it to 20 years. That's a new change that's listed in this resolution. Then they said that you can no longer, you can't assess something for longer than the value of its life. I'm going to amend two specific items in there. I think you've heard that my background was manufacturing in the roofing industry. I know for a fact that lifetime warranties on shingle roofs are basically a scam. Shingle roofs in the state of Florida, 15 years max, so I'm going to be putting forward additional consumer protections that PACE can, that no provider can assess for longer than 15 years. Same thing with air conditioners, it's down to eight years. These are not the, the air conditioners of when most of us grew, I know I'm the youngest, but these are, these are no longer the same air conditioners. I mean, eight years is probably the max. And, and the reason that it's important that we do that board is because the providers could come in and say, well, the manufacturer says that this roof is good for 30 years, but we're capped at 20, so we'll do it for 20. But in reality, in Florida, we know that it, it's not going to last meaningfully longer than 15. Well, if they took an assessment and their roof fails at 15 years and they're already economically disadvantaged, well, then they're paying for one roof still and they can't get out of it, and they have to go back and find a way to pay for a second roof. And the same thing with air conditioners. And I'm more than fine if, if the board's will is that they would like it to be pushed for two weeks because they would like some time to review, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I did provide all of the information. The motion is only going to, only to direct staff to work with the providers, review the documents, put the resolution in place, and then if there's changes that the attorneys, et cetera, need to add to the interlocal agreements, we all know that that's something that's likely going to happen. And if an agreement isn't made with the providers, then that's, that's their choosing, and then we don't, we don't vote to approve them. So, that's what I would say.
So for clarity, hold on, Commissioner Kemp. For clarity, is the motion to direct staff to work with the providers on the resolution? Or do you want to?
No, the, the motion, okay, I will go ahead and make the motion then. Yeah, I have not made the motion. I'll go ahead and make a motion then. I just want, I figured folks might want to add more. My first motion then is to amend section 11 to restrict the assessment timeframe for air conditioners to eight years and shingle roofs to 15 years. Section 11 of the resolution is the portion that deals with the value of life and limiting assessments to 20 years. That's the financing agreement. Does not exceed the weighted average useful life of the quality improvements, and I would like to specifically restrict the quality of life for air conditioners to eight years and shingle roofs to 15 years. 11.
Commissioner Hagan, I never gave up the floor here. I just asked for some clarification.
We need to have a motion on the floor in order to have dialogue anyway. So that's why I wanted Commissioner Wostol to, to state his motion. Before I go back to you, Commissioner Kemp, Bonnie, are you good with that?
Well, we were a little concerned, confused what the motion was because it was different than what was on the agenda, and that's why we wanted that clarified.
But now are you good?
I'm not sure I am. Can, just, if you can say it one more time, I think that would just help us, the staff, what we're suppo, I want to make sure we, we know what we're supposed to come back with.
Well, Chair, it's, it's really up to you. I can just combine them. I just wanted to add in those two further consumer protections.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and combine it.
Okay.
Do it all.
No problem. No problem at all. All right. I am motion, my motion is to adopt the resolution before you, which was authorized, which would authorize a PACE program for Hillsborough County, and to have staff work on entering into interlocal agreements with the various PACE finance authorities. This is with the exception of an amendment to item number 11 to restrict the average useful life of air conditioners to eight years and shingle roofs to 15 years. Those interlocal agreements are also contained in the agenda packet, and I understand may take few weeks, months, or county staff to review and make amendments and suggestions. Staff must then sign the interlocal agreements with the providers in order for that provider to be able to participate in the PACE program we establish through this resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Wostol. Second, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, so I guess we never established who the interlocal agreements that were included in here were actually written by. But let me just respond to the PACE program because I've, it was passed here in Hillsborough County shortly after I became a commissioner, within the first few months, and I supported it then. PACE sounds good, but it's not. I fell for it the first time many years ago. Many other people have. This county commission canceled the program in 2020. Let's please not make that mistake again. Lobbyists for financial companies sell PACE to county commissioners. These lobbyists say PACE helps poor people get home improvements. But there are other good programs that are really good programs that are vetted and, and can help our residents, including one that I brought to Hillsborough County called the Solar Energy Loan Fund, SELF. It has a bank, it helps people that are credit challenged or financially challenged to make these improvements, including roofs. Any other programs, and other programs do this without the risk, not only SELF, but other programs do this without the risk of foreclosure. PACE is fundamentally flawed and sets low-income homeowners, homeowners up for failure. What's special about PACE is that it uses tax liens on family homes to collect payments and enforce non-payment. This quickly becomes a powerful mechanism to separate poor people from their homes. Homeowners are shocked to find they owe thousands of dollars on their county tax bill that they cannot afford. When they cannot pay, they lose their homes, and the county tax collector is in the position of using county resources and staff to enforce the foreclosure against the family. Nancy Malone, our tax collector, opposes PACE. Only three states in the nation have allowed PACE to take effect, California, Missouri, and Florida. Many counties in Florida, like Hillsborough County, approved PACE and then regretted it and canceled it, like Hillsborough County did in 2020. Los Angeles County was one of the first to do it, Los Angeles County, California, and they discontinued the program as fundamentally flawed. They put all kinds of investment in correcting it and changing it. They decided that there was no reform that could solve the problem. In 2021, the last time PACE was brought up, the Tampa Bay and Florida Realtors came out against PACE. Jacob Brunel of the Realtors told the commission at the time, he said, quote, "For many borrowers, PACE loans are unaffordable mortgage products that put them in danger of foreclosure. PACE lending has become an urgent problem in low-income communities where the product is actively sold. That's where it's pushed and sold." There's a lot more I could say about this. We should stop wasting our very limited time trying to implement the fundamentally flawed PACE program once again.
All right, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes, I was previously against the PACE program as well, but because of the recent changes that have been made to protect the consumer, and we know for many people, there's no other option for them to receive urgent help. So for that reason, I will be supporting this.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I have concerns about PACE, in particular when we look at and think of the unasserted communities, the black and brown folks. Many times these programs, that's who they go to are for remodeling the home and act conditions and, and all of this good stuff. I do agree with Commissioner Kemp on some of the information she shared, particularly when we talked about this either last year or the year before, that we voted down the PACE program. Because when an individual, particular black and brown community, homeowners end up losing their home for something that they were not told to by the salesperson, and they said that salesperson was not a part of PACE, it's a different person that comes out to. Well, I want to be clear, I'm going to champion my communities, not to support Chase, if it's still the same. Because I don't want anyone, black and brown, losing their commu, losing their home over a program when we're just not upfront with the homeowner. We never ask for, with the homeowner, do you have children? Can they be here with you when you want to sign all these documents? It's just, go to the elderly person. It just happened last week, I got a call on, who's lost their home? We need to stop that. We don't need any programs that cause people who have been in their homes all of their lives, don't know what they're signing, and yet you're telling them, oh, if you sign this and if you don't pay this, then you're no longer a homeowner. You've been living in your home 50-some-plus years, and now you don't have anything today, and you're crying and you're contacting everyone. So I want to be clear, yes, the legislature's made some changes, but we cannot pry on the black and brown community for this program. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
So what I'm really objecting to today is that I feel like based on what the agenda item says, it is premature to vote on anything. I wanted to have an opportunity, basically because of the objections that you're hearing and a lot of the information that's been out there over the years, an opportunity to really hear about what the legislature's done, not just for us, but for the public, so that we can, can make, you know, make an informed decision about how to, how to move forward. So if, if there's anything to vote on today, I can't support it. But if this comes back to us, even at our next meeting, with, with, you know, some, some basic information about what the legislature's done that can assure all of us with questions, and the public with questions about what's been changed, then I'll be able to, to consider supporting it. But I, I just feel that based on the fact that the agenda said, consider establishing a public hearing, that signaled to me that there would be an opportunity for us to have a little bit more robust discussion and for people to have noticed about it.
Christine, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure that we're all communicating because the resolution in section three actually provides that the Hillsborough County Commission approves all of the interlocals. So I didn't hear that that's, I thought you wanted some, you know, review and, and all of that, so maybe you'd want to change that to, we'll consider them, and then when you bring this back, that way if there's any needed input or modification, it could all be approved, the interlocals could be approved. That's kind of how I understood what you said.
Yeah, in my motion, I mean, I clearly said it would take time, the interlocals have to review, and that they have to go through staff, that's something I have to agree, but I'm more than happy for a friendly amendment for it to be replaced back on, I think, the August 21st with a brief overview of the improvements that the state legislature received. And, and I'm 100% with you, Commissioner Myers, and that's why I put it forward with the opportunity for more consumer protections. That's why I want my two add-ins in there. And we should bring back anything to make it crystal clear that if these providers violate our consumer protections, there is no talking, there is a immediate pulling of their interlocal agreement with no questions asked. I'm, I'm 100% with you. It's, you're either going to be good participants in our community, or you're going to not participate in our community. And that's the message that I think that we, this is, this program should send.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll just say this is way too important to do on the fly like this without any of the basic background and information that this commission or the public could understand or know about this program and how anything's been changed. So I, I still don't understand exactly, to tell you the truth, what the motion does, like, you know, what posture it's in. I'll just say that.
All right, Commissioner Myers, and then Commissioner Wostol make some final comments.
Thank you. Could we just agree to do, have the public hearing so that would allow staff time enough to research and gather all the information? And I don't know if And I don't know if two weeks would be time enough. Could it come back to us in September? If we just agree to hold a public hearing so that we could hear from the public as well? Going to ask?
That's totally up to the board. It's not legally required, but I thought that I just heard that you were maybe suggesting that it would come back on the 21st.
I was accepting a friendly amendment for it to receive the briefing of the changes and for it to be placed on the August 21st ballot with everything else that I said. Agenda, not ballot.
It's all right, Mr. Chair. I mean, I think the good thing about that, then the public is aware of it, we have time to prepare, and everybody can vote however they please.
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay, so we have the motion by Commissioner Wostol.
I second it.
And there's, I guess I'm making a friendly amendment that it be placed on the agenda on the 21st of August.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp, then we're voting.
Okay. And I'd just like to know, when it comes back, are we going to have information about what these changes are, about what all the, that the legislature's made?
I believe so. I think that was the-
How was the intent of the amendment?
I feel like my microphone's not working. Commissioner Cohen?
Yes, the answer is yes. All right, we got a motion and a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Okay, Bonnie, next item?
Final item or future discussion items?
Okay, I have one. I know staff's been working with Manatee County for some time now on a, on Fort Hammer Road down in South County. I just want staff to come back in 60 days with a status report on what's going on there. Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two future items. During a community cleanup with Tampa City Councilman Louis Viera, we were cleaning headstones in a cemetery that is filled with veterans, and of course, our excellent staff found that there's even more than we realized. So I will direct staff to work with the city of Tampa and the City of Tampa Parks and Recreation Department to offer an agreement for up to $10,000 to be matched by the city of Tampa on a one-to-one basis for the restoration of the existing historical monument for African-American veterans of World War I located at Memorial Park Cemetery. This request is in recognition of the African-American veterans who served in their, served their country in World War I and are laid to rest at Memorial Park Cemetery at 2425 East Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard in Tampa. Funding for the agreement is to be from an appropriate county budget and will be included in an agenda item to be brought back to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting, at which point you will hear me talk about the extremely dilapidated state that that monument is in. My second future item is to request county staff to analyze all county-owned properties and determine from a surplusing point of view how much funding would or could be made available to fire, rescue, sidewalk, and road repair, and I would like that analysis done as soon as possible, which I'm told will take some time to do properly by staff. Thank you.
Bonnie, you got both of those? Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we're adjourned.